Okay, we'll follow me in the order of what we need.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aye.
Aye.
Morning Linda, how are you today?
Good morning.
Good. I guess I'll just let the commissioners ask the questions that they have of you if you're ready.
I'm ready and I get the orders and I will be right.
Okay, sounds good.
Linda, we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Ed Brown, Chairman.
Alright, thank you.
Merta Heisler.
Oh, Mertens.
Anna Leipman.
Mark Olson.
Okay, you can, I guess, give us a little synopsis of what you understand the farm exemption rule is.
Okay, I will start off then by introducing myself. For your record, I am Elizabeth Jenner. I am the Director of Property Assessment. And from what I understand from your first conversation, we did have a, I guess even with probably someone from your newspaper, having questions about the farm residence exemption. I will explain to you that by North Dakota laws, every property is taxable and should be on the tax home attached unless otherwise exempted by law. So in 570208, the farm residence is provided an exemption in that section and it provides specific details about what qualifications must be that are to be exempted as a farm residence. There's going to be a process that has been established through procedures and applications that is required to be filed by every person each year for this taxable property to be exempted. And that would just be a standard for anyone who wants to be exempted. It cannot just be an assumption that you're exempted unless of course you're a political subdivision or government entity. And then how each individual county has handled the renewal process or how it actually moves forward with that after every year as far as verifying the income. I think those are the questions that you have and I will maybe let you ask those if you have more details of questions you want to ask about that.
Okay. While you're waiting, anybody that's got a question on this?
Linda, what's the role between the township is doing the assessing, the county is the taxable entity? What's the interplay between the township and the county in this situation?
I'm not certain I understand what you mean because I will try to address part of it and see if that is the question because we do in the Bay of North Dakota still have local assessment officials, which we give it to township or the city. And then the next level is the county and then it comes to the state or the civilization. So if you have a township assessor, it would be their, they would be part of the first part of the process. Some counties have chosen because assessors do not want to be the ones involved in knowing what their neighbor's income is and if they are eligible or not. They have just deferred the application process to the tax director. I think it can be done either way depending on what policy each county would want to set. So the assessor would still, you know, would still be that first point. So they would probably, you know, be the one that could do the activity as far as the application. But I think in a lot of situations where assessors say, "I don't want to ask my neighbor for his tax return if he's eligible or not," they have deferred the application process to the tax director. So the tax director will handle it and then by the time that the assessment official in the township gets the book in February, that notification or note whether they're exempted or not is already made in a book so the assessor does not have to get that personal information from someone they would consider an important friend.
Okay, that's essentially what I was attempting to ask, closely.
Good.
Linda, this is Bill. So, but the 10 acres, the 10 acres and being used as part of farm plant is, you know, that's an important part of this equation as well.
Correct. The detailed specifics are outlined for us in statute, which then have been kind of put together into a little bit more friendly form in the exemption of farm buildings and other improvements guidelines. So that does identify those 10 acres that may have to be part of a farm plant, whether it's a ranching operation or a crop.
Linda, your knowledge, how many counties are taxing or using the farm exemption, I guess, and how many aren't? Do you have any knowledge of that?
Unfortunately, no, I will say we don't have any numbers. I guess what I will say is that from our side of the world, we educate all counties to follow the process of knowing that the all tax, all property is taxable unless exempted for a specific reason. What I think happened for a long time, they tried to understand why these transitions are happening now, is that the landscape of farming has really changed. I mean, I'm from a farm and that's where I was for years and years. And then as soon as I went to town to start working here, I just put my house on because of the heat and trying to deal with any questions about it even before I'd been at 40,000. But what it was before this exemption, I believe forever and many years that it's been in place, was the idea that everybody out in the country, they were farmers. They were living there, they were making their living off the land, they were paying the taxes on the land around it, everything was part of it, so the health was exempted. What's really been happening a lot now is that because farming has changed and people, and our families have changed, where these families of just, "Oh, my old Kentucky cow left, wouldn't be doing that now." But I don't know which old, that's how it'd be a top working. So it became the question of how it changed up there. And people were just noticing that and started to see what was happening. What became the biggest issue in the county where I'm from was that those houses were exempted and then someone would notice that somebody, you know, all might, if this guy's wife is a doctor and grad work, they certainly should be taxed. So then it was one neighbor twenty figures than another neighbor. And then that's how it starts coming on. And people started going, "Wow, things better look at every year and question who is on every year or not." And because it became more of a question now, when we start hearing about Measure Number Two and equity in property tax, those questions just became bigger and bigger at legislation all the time. So the legislature had always questioning who's getting exemptions that shouldn't be. But I think the pressure was coming down probably to the tax directors to make sure that they were equitably assessing everybody and not just giving out exemptions because they always have been exempted. So I think what's happened now, I think in probably the last six, eight years, we've seen more counties go to this practice now of making sure they have that application done every year. And then they have developed this cycle of when they have to verify the income. These some staff, whether we're in the law, we, there's one, one of the categories about the income from off-farm and then the other part about being net farm income being 50%. One of the statements is in each of the three preceding years and one is in any of the three preceding years. So once you have found an individual to be eligible this year, they would most likely then be eligible the next two because they've met it within that standard of those three preceding years. So they still have an application filed on the early basis. But then they have kind of developed a review of the income on an every third year basis so they still have the application every year and then not tapping with the income every year. So that doesn't lock it too much to me. And I think a lot of, you know, the county staff have laid out a much better texture for us, you know, so it's been done to that way. But I think it's just been, it's been converting to it now, so there's been more and more of them. I know the end is coming with any of the applications this year. Probably for the first time to everybody on April address. I think, I guess I can't say, I don't, Grand Force Kelly has been doing it this way for several years, where they have the application every year and then a review of the income on a, I think they've divided Kelly basically into thirds. So she says about the renewal information or the review of income information every third year. But I don't have firm number of who is or who isn't following that practice. But like for me, it would be that's the same, I believe that most of them are doing it, but how they have administered it, I didn't, I can't say for certain.
Thank you. Do you know how long this law's been in the books? Could you answer that for me?
How long it's been eligible to be exempted?
Yeah, when did they pass this law?
To exempt a farm residence? I do not know that I would have to look back to accession law to see if there was something specifically addressing when it did. I can get that back to you if you want me to.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Well, you wanted to know how long the exemption has been available?
Yes.
Okay, absolutely. Just wanted to make sure I have my question correct.
Can the counties add any categories? Would we have to pass a law? We have an instance of a farmer who lost his arm in a farming accident. I think in that case, we would want to work toward making his residence exempt.
Well, you would, at this point, would not be able to proceed things that are exempted. So we would clearly have to look and see if there is any sort of exemption or credit available to that individual. So he's lost, he's lost a limb, he had an accident, you said?
Yeah, and this happened several years ago. It's nothing we need to deal with anymore. But, but it's my understanding that the auditor that I exempted him from paying taxes on his, on his own property.
And I don't, I don't believe that would be acceptable unless, like, if we could find that he was still actively farming and he were living in a, in a home that was part of a farm plant if he weren't exempted from that. If there are other reasons that he would met that qualification, if for some reason it's an immiscibility, depending upon his percentage of immiscibility and if we're considering permanent, 100% of the children would have been options for providing a credit for him that way. But I think each individual is, if like that, we really have to consider to see if there is something available to them.
Would our, would our tax director or assessor then be required to go out and measure a farm set to make sure it's 10 acres contingent?
I would hope that they wouldn't have to measure it really. I would hope that your legal descriptions and if you have Google Maps or if you do some of your G I X programming, that maybe that's contiguous acres for that farm. But what's important to understand that if, if they're going to be valuing this property, it's really recommended, even though they would be exempted, that they have all the details of the property card on that residence at some point. So if the taxes, if this property were to become taxable, it would be easily added to it without having to go out and first to measure and then go to selling it. So we think they have details on that property description already. But I think the 10 contiguous acres should easily be, would be managed by the legal description and your G I X mapping.
Okay.
Any other questions? No more questions? Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome. I appreciate any more, then certainly no further questions. And it was the fact that you're talking about it and we need to ask you. I will then look to see what, if there's anything referenced in session law when the exemption was made available to the farm. And like I say, everything, if you're looking into this, it is referenced in 570208, subsection 15. There's a guideline that is available also on the act commissioner's website under our publications section. And the application stuff that is on the website as well. And so if there are questions about those specifically, certainly we tell them, we'll go over that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, without moving to approval bills? We'll move. Motion to approve the bill, your second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Oh hey, Mr. Chairman, the one for the motorbaters was off by 5,000 on your list. So they made a typo on the, when they sent them to us, so that one was on 5,000.
The 208.
Yep.
They went on to 213.
I don't know what they think. I think that's the way it was. There were two of the same because of the trade value and one was different because of the trade.
Yeah, okay. They give us more credit?
No.
It was a correction or robbery?
We fixed that one, though, didn't we?
That wasn't the one.
So it should be 213,000?
It was an extra 5,000, I thought.
That was 208.
Any other questions? Move that with the question.
Okay.
And then could we correct the law for the town of Owens, Rob? Is that the highest we've ever hit?
No, I think it's been pretty average. I will give you a scenario since I've been doing this halfway through.
The 70,000?
Yeah. Olson?
Aye.
Leipman?
Aye.
Mertens?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Now move into the financial reports.
The rate on schedule. So if you see the percentages on the sign of the liability reports and then of course the percentage on the budgets. Some are high, but that's, they're only paid once a year, so they're at the 99 or 100%. So if anybody has any questions, I can sure answer them.
Questions? Motion to approve?
Aye.
Second.
Motion and second?
Mertens? Leipman?
Aye.
Heisler? Aye. Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Treasures checks. Hanging out of ordinary there. Motion to approve treasures checks, but they're second.
Second.
Second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Heisler?
Aye.
Leipman?
Aye.
Mertens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye. Approval of agenda? Any corrections other than what's on here now?
Stacy Tweed is here. He had said he thought he'd be gone, but he's here, so he wanted to say, "Hi, this is Roger."
I'm here, yeah.
Very good. Motion to approve?
Aye.
Motion and second to approve the agenda? All voters say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Visitors and delegations?
Mr. Chairman, Anthony Hermans here today representing K M J. Have any questions?
Anything else? Who would happen? Well, Stacy.
The month of March was busy, even though I was gone, most of the third week for convention in Bismarck. For the month, I had over 70, I think it's in the report that should be there. And we're continuing on this trend of over 70 veterans coming in, seeking benefits and whatnot, helping in that way. One thing about the convention, first day of the convention in Bismarck, we had a full day of legal training on Veterans Court and representation by lawyers for veterans. It was probably one of the most interesting conventions we've had in a long time. Other than that, the V A has started last Wednesday with all new forms, which is another learning experience for us. They're calling it standardized forms. And it just changed everything, is what it did. Now we have to send a form in telling them that we're going to apply for a claim. Where in the past, we just sent in a claim. Now we got to tell them we're going to send for a claim. So our government is doing us a one big favor again. So it's another new learning curve for me anyway. So, but other than that, everything's going good. I got the new desk in, if anybody wants to stop in and see. It worked out pretty good. So that's all I got.
Very good. Thank you, Stacy. Any questions for Stacy? No, that's good. Mr. Exlow? Do you have two contracts?
Yeah, we picked up two more townships just since the last meeting. It's just a continuing thing. I think there's more townships not providing their own assessing. So kind of late in the game to pick up the townships, but we went out and drove the townships. And I guess the contracts just need to be approved. It's open heart in township.
Okay. Official review on that, Jerry. How many residences are in those?
Um, neither one of them have very many. There's probably, I guess I don't, I've been through so many of them lately that I don't know. Probably 10 between the two townships. But yesterday, we, we went through one of the other townships that we just picked up and that was on Bartlett. And there's, there's quite a bit going on in Bartlett. I know with Doian and the new elevator and those small village of Bartlett and a lot of farm sets, kind of. You know, the ones that we don't do assessing and it's kind of an eye opener, we actually go drive through them. Some new construction.
Okay, thank you. Roger?
There should be a motion to approve those contracts.
A motion to approve contracts.
A motion to approve the contracts, your second. All voters say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Can you handle all of these new townships?
Well, after, for now, we'll definitely be talking about that budget time.
Right, you didn't, you didn't have in your budget to hire someone?
No.
Okay. You did last year, right?
Right. Now, these last ones that we picked up, I think this is four and five, were kind of unexpected. We've been running just with the same amount of townships for quite some time. And I think it's just a trend of assessing isn't getting any easier as values go up and as things like this farm residence come up, the farm residence exemption. So I think we're just going to see more. Even though the assessor certification bill failed in the House, so I think maybe that was having an effect on the assessor's footing also. But it is getting to be more of a low.
Okay, back to Roger. Sorry, I missed you.
Regarding the elevator. Otis is actually finishing up a little sooner than they thought they would. Technically, they're kind of done with their part of it today. However, I still need to paint the inside of the car, which I had to wait to do until after they were done. And we're going to get new linoleum put in and that's coming in next Tuesday or Wednesday. But every one of you got a sheet regarding this fire alarm system. The fire alarm is not operable yet and we really don't know how long it's going to be. The electricians are waiting on basically an electrical box. And they don't know if that's going to be here next week or a month from now. But we can operate the elevator without it. We've been operating without it for 55 years. But Otis thinks it's a big to-do operating your elevator without this fire alarm. And what the fire alarm is outside on each floor, outside the elevator, about in the ceiling, about 15 feet from a car, 10, 15 feet, whatever it is, there's a smoke or a fire alarm detector there. And if that detects fire, it sends the car to, well, whatever floor we choose to have as a main floor and first floor, of course, would be our main floor. It sends it to that floor and opens the door and locks it. However, if it's the fire is on first floor, then it will send it to a different floor, open a door and unlock it. I guess what your guys' choice is, is once we're done with the painting and linoleum, do we want to start operating the elevator without having the fire detection? What Otis is looking for is somebody to take the liability, you know.
Is this, does our insurance policy require it? Apparently not if we have the.
No, and by reading, you know, in reading this, you know, there, it isn't a law or anything. And, you know, it's just something that they, in their policy as an elevator company, they want that fire alarm system in place before you start operating the elevator. However, there is not a law that says it has to be. And our insurance, it wouldn't be any different than before we had the fire alarm system. I mean, you know, really nothing's changed there. So.
What would happen at this point if we had a fire in the building with the elevator?
Well, it would operate just like it has in the past. It would, it would operate until somebody shut it off. There's nothing telling it not to.
So do we need to put our policy in place that your gov or somebody's gov to shut the elevator off in case of fire until we have that system?
Yes.
Wouldn't that cover us then if we have a policy in place until we get it?
Yeah, I don't know that.
From a risk management standpoint, doesn't that just make sense?
That does.
There, I'm sure there is no technical policy in place right now for anyone to shut it off. As well, it'd be my, my job, you know, to see it's done, yes, but I know there's nothing.
Where do you have to go to shut it off?
I was just going to say Roger's probably on the nose of where to go to shut it off.
I don't even think I know where you go to shut it off.
Can you not bring it to a floor and lock it open?
Yeah, you can.
Isn't that what?
That'd be the quickest, the easiest thing to do.
I mean, that would be better than going all the way up to yours to shut it off.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
It should be somebody's job to do that in case of fire.
It'd be easy, it's in the policy manual to have somebody do that. I see the chain of events and we always used to deal with issues in the basement anyway, so.
I don't think we need to put in the policy manual because.
It'll be, it'll be not a void soon.
It'll be moved, yeah.
In a couple, in two to four weeks, it won't be, at a point, let's have it in there.
Yeah.
Maybe we should have signed within the courthouse if there is a fire in these stairways.
I, I definitely make those signs.
They do, they do. It is in the policy to use the.
Oh, yeah.
They do use the stairs, not the elevator.
I know, but it's, but if you shut the elevator off, then they really will do that.
Yeah.
And it's only common sense.
Well, that, but not everybody has. Well, in the case of a fire, people, it needs to have common sense. I mean, that's.
This memo with Roger, then just to relieve Otis's of any liability?
Yeah, basically.
They want to be.
Yeah.
So he would want us to have a motion in fact that, you know, on the minutes that we're relieving them of any liability.
And they want to email back basically stating that when we start the elevator up, if we start it up before the fire alarm system has been placed, that they're not going to be held liable for it.
One other question I have, is that, like, to turn off to it, does that come with the elevator? Is that a safety feature or?
Well, yeah, it is a safety feature.
It is.
Yeah, unlike, like when, when the electricians get done with their part of it, then it always has to come back like the letter says and they have to basically hook it up. And once that is in place, yeah, if they ever detect smoke or fire, then it shuts the elevator off.
That's good, you think, right?
I'll make a motion to put, to relieve Otis of their liability with the contingency that they notify maintenance when it's in place and that we have a pol, and that we make a policy that the, that maintenance will shut down the elevator in case of fire.
Okay, we have a motion, let it go back to the second.
A second.
We have a chance to read, we'll actually pass it over to you. What do you think?
Well, when, when you have agreements and waivers of liability and things like that, really what you're looking at is secondary to a claim and secondary to a lawsuit. And in any event, what's going to go on is if somebody's going to file a claim against the county, they're going to name Ramsey County, Otis Elevator Company and everybody in God's green earth as defendants. And then we'll let the fur fly from there. So, you know, we can put it in our, our minutes and have it in the record there. However, it doesn't prevent us or Otis or anybody really from being sued.
Right.
So I would see any big harm in putting it in our minutes, knowing full well that it would be all rectified in short order.
Would you still like those signs made to put up by each, by the elevator doors on each floor?
Probably on a temporary basis, but I think on a permanent basis, it'd be something to remind people, you know, instead of standing in our way for the elevator.
Right. I would make nice signs, have them live even then and.
Make a decent sign.
Yeah, put them in each stairway and.
You want them in the stairways and by the elevator?
By the elevator, yeah.
Okay.
But right now, I'd better put something up.
Yeah, sure. I'll get some paper copy of something, put up today and then I'll make some nicer ones.
Thank you.
Always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Hey, we have a motion and a second. All bayers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Anything else, Roger?
Also, in the past, in the event that somebody happened to drop their keys, they can fit between the elevator floor and the floor of the hallway. There's a gap like this, always has been. And theoretically, once every five years, somebody drops their keys in between there. Before all this new electronic the stuff we got put in, we could open, I could run the car up and open the door and then crawl down into it, get the keys, no problem. But our new electronics doesn't like that. If we open the door, we have to have the elevator maintenance man come because it just doesn't accept the fact that we opened the door. It says there's something wrong and shuts the elevator down. So, and it takes, there are costs roughly two hundred and fifty dollars for the elevator repair man to come here from Lienau to start up the elevator again. And I'm just, as a heads up, you know, theoretically, that three years, because it was about two years ago, the last time somebody dropped their keys down there. So, I said roughly every five years this happens. So it'll be, it's just newer isn't always better in some ways, but
This gap is still there then?
It always will be. You can't get rid of it.
Otis have no idea how to get rid of it?
No, you gotta, they gotta have so much clearance for the car to run up and down. So, like I said, it doesn't
Couldn't have a cushion at each floor down there? Like just a, you know, styrofoam or something?
It's, I don't think of it as that big of a deal. I just thought I'd mention it. Because you can't expect these person who dropped their keys to make that payment. I mean, certainly it was an accident that they dropped their keys and like I said, it doesn't happen very often, but I just thought I'd bring it here, yeah.
Would there be, could there be any way that they could train you to do that or could we put it in a contract?
Yes, that is something I'm gonna talk with our serviceman about if there's something that we can do. I've been talking to the guys who are putting in all this electronic stuff and maybe our serviceman has a different idea than they do. Just to, because he probably doesn't want to be bothered with having to come down here either. So, just for that. So that is a possibility, yeah.
So you don't need any, you don't need any extra money?
Like I said, that was kind of a heads up.
Any else, Roger, so?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
First and foremost, in the packets or your electronic packets, you received the new Ramsey County Courthouse. It was just an updated version for our evacuation plan. A few things were added, nothing major. The core of the plan has stayed the same. Every couple of years, three years, I try to update that just to, there was any changes or whatnot. Unless anybody has any questions or comments or would like to see anything different to it. I was just looking to see if that would be able to be sent today.
You reviewed that with the department heads, so the department heads can tell their people how to
They, they get copies of it. All the department heads get copies and it's sent out, filtered out through the rest of the employees. They have had it before and it's, you know, we've never had an instance where we've had to utilize it, so to speak. This summer, I am in talks with a chief of health to do a fire safety drill here at the courthouse. I think those need to be done on an annual basis just to keep things sharp. They haven't been done. That is something I would like to see done. I would choose to do it during the warm months, so we don't have to stand outside the pool. Even though a fire can happen or something can happen.
There was no big changes to that?
Not any big changes.
I remember we have been in the past where we all evacuated.
And there is, you know, you know, per area, what floor you're on, to evacuate to which door, you know. And it is everybody's responsibility to read it and to understand it and to know if they have questions to ask me, which may not happen, but I provide the information, so.
What else?
I also have, I wanna let you know that it's that time of the year again with the weather today, you may not think so, for a burn ban for Ramsey County. Right now, we're in the moderate fire danger rating zone. Governor Don Aronkol did put out a statewide fire burn for the whole state for those that are in the high category or higher. Right now, we're not there. I'll keep an eye on that and bring that to your all's attention if something were to occur there. Also, quarterly reports for all open grants, I've been working on that. We did get notifications from the Association of Counties that they got an ergonomics grant. And it's basically enough for us to get two chairs per county unless some counties opt out of the grant, which I haven't heard yet. We, I did go and ask all departments regarding this of, you know, whose chair is in poor condition, poor quality, uncomfortable, they've been having issues or problems. And we do, I do have about seven people on my list right now. So I'm going to be sent from Mike Wolf's recommendations on how to determine which chair basically is the worst out of the bunch, to be able to determine who will be able to get the dollars through this grant. It is a seventy-five, they're paying seventy-five percent. We pay twenty-five percent. So I did let everybody know that it would have to come up with their budget as well. I didn't know, I thought I'd ask to see if the commission would like to play any money into that as far as if we needed five chairs total, if they'd want to kick in for the other three, if that would be something you'd wanna look at or wait till after budget time, the individuals need to put that into their budget. I don't know if that would be something you'd wanna think about and let me know. I don't even know right now, but just leave for thought.
When do you think the money come down?
Hopefully within one to two months. So you have a little time to think about it and let me know.
That's not our goal, I guess.
Okay. And there may be a couple of counties that opt out, so we may get, you know, additional funding for a third chair. I just don't know at this time. One more thing, there is an NFIP course that's going to be held out in Maryland. I was hoping to get into the June course, but it's full. So I can do it in September. It's fully paid for airline and lodging. Everything except for food would be reimbursable by the EMI institution out in Maryland. It's for all of our national flood insurance, the program, the ins and outs of it. It would be very beneficial for me to partake in it and it would be something I would like to do. I would like to get on the reserve list now so I'm able to get in this calendar year.
Thank you. Beneficial?
I do.
Okay, let's do this evacuation plan. We need a motion to that.
Just wanna make a motion to the evacuation plan.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all bayers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Kristen, what'd you call this again?
National flood insurance program.
We're not gonna have a flood year again, are we?
Not this year. No, not yet. I think we're okay this year.
Where was it at again?
It's in Maryland and it's for
You got it in your budget?
It's paid for by them.
By them.
Everything except for my food and that will be able to come out of my travel.
It's something that, it's something that's, I know the previous actually has a pedophile that and said it was very, very beneficial.
There's other courses, but this one I think is kind of the top of the game right now where I'd like to see myself home.
Second, a motion and a second?
I believe it's for four or five days. I have to double check. It's not
When was this again?
The third week in September.
Okay.
So my follow will be busy again and you'll see me sporadically, but I'll be around.
Any other questions, any discussion? All bayers say aye?
Aye.
All, all, motion carries. Anything else, Chris?
Unless anybody has anything for me.
Can you explain a little bit to us about what happened with the power surge shut down?
Yeah, well
Shut down the nine-one-one?
Here's what happened. There was a transformer, something, something hit it, something went wrong. I don't exactly know. And it basically surged the power for about half of the city. And when I, I happened to be downstairs that day, I hadn't left the building yet. And so the power flickered and I have backup power to my computers for the system. And so when the power flickered, I thought, oh, you know, look at that. I wasn't aware that the power was out in the courthouse for an hour or a little more 'cause the backup generator, it kicked in and it worked as it should, only for the basement, the refrigerator and freezer on second floor for vaccines for public health and Lonny's office. So it worked exactly how it should. I know there were a lot of concerns and some complaints that the generator wasn't abused, it didn't do anything. It did exactly what it was supposed to. It did its job and we just refueled it too. As far as it, why it happened, I don't know the exact, I haven't heard anything from Otter Tales why it's the transformer went out, what happened to it. I know that it affected a good fifty percent of the population here and I know that it glitched our security system and we had to have remote access 'cause they had to reposition all of our cameras, like tilted off to the, to one corner basically and some of them were fuzzy. So I had to adjust and fix that. And I also know that it took out our, what do you call it, Polycom system in the but that'll be covered under our insurance too. We can submit that, but I don't know why. I know it was up for a little over an hour and
That's my biggest concern, is nine-one-one going down. And what, were you in contact with them?
I didn't know they went down or they didn't call.
Probably should talk with
I can call Star.
Fire chief in Star and ask them to put you back in the loop.
They have backup generators to their facility.
Yes, they did.
I mean, they kicked, they correct, it kicked in.
And, but it took an hour to, it was down for a couple hours.
I know it affected their automatic fingerprint system. I still just got some glitches in it.
Well, we were doing a lot of unfortunate, nine-one-one was available.
Yeah, it, the system was available. They probably had to resort back to more of a basic method than what they're normally used to running with, but it was still there.
But you should have been in the loop.
I should have been, you're right. Any other question?
More, more training exercises to deal with. You can use that as an example.
Yeah, there you go. We are actually, during our quarterly meetings, we are in the midst of putting one together for a train enrollment here within, in Devil's Lake. And it'll be for all of our county participants that wanna come to get involved in on it. And I'm gonna open it up to other counties to not responding agencies, but other emergency management entities that wanna come in and participate for our grant requirements as well. And that, we're looking in mid to late August is what I'm thinking, so. We don't have a concrete date set, but that's the timeframe we're looking. Other than that, I really don't have anything else. I could talk longer, but
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We should do that hearing on the abatement, so.
And there is two years instead of just one. I just sent it out on copy, so, but Jerry, it's here, it's all for the abatement. I saw one. Yeah, there is two years. It's thirteen and fourteen. My accident, I didn't put one on, you know. This is the one that said, you know, there was another one that said, he put in that said something about applying connect farm residence exemption? He put that on there. Is that a different thing or is that just a, Gary King something?
Believe it or not, with the publicity on the farm residence exemption, we've had a lot of people come in and call in. And I think this is possibly one that he should have been exempted.
But he wasn't?
And wasn't. So
But he has the trucking industry too, that's why I'm wondering.
Yeah, and he did voluntarily bring his income tax records and let me go through his income taxes. He definitely qualifies. And that, that has been office policy in our office. If, if we're taxing your house and you want it exempted, you have approved that, it needs to be exempted. And he didn't have a problem with that. He definitely qualifies. And I, I don't think he really knew that he was being taxed on his house.
Because of the other kids?
And then he did just acquire it, I think, not too many years ago, so. He qualifies. I recommend that he be approved as he submitted it.
And, and the law is that he can go back a year, what is it, a year from November of the year that it becomes delinquent?
Yeah, November first following the year that the tax became delinquent, which is kind of a roundabout way, but sometimes it's two years and sometimes it's three years depending on the time of the year you apply.
Yeah, and in this case, it did go back two years.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve that motion.
A second, a motion and a second to approve the exemption on the abatement. Any other discussion?
The township one fifty-three, one fifty-four that just got typed up, Ron? Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly what it is.
Is it all set there on?
Okay.
And the township did approve it. Do you guys know it was a fair time there?
I was just getting curious what happened there.
Okay, all bayers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Bill?
Hold it up long enough, sorry.
Sorry. Just to start letting you know that achievement day is soon coming, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth of June. Last year, we, as Commissioner Brown was out in the south, we were getting a lot of participation. Surprisingly, a lot of animals are coming back to the bear. The horse show achievement day is June the thirteenth, it's a Saturday. The farm bill this year, in Ramsey County, I work with fifty-nine different producers. That doesn't mean just one farm either. There could be anywhere from one farm to ten farms. I'm also a mentor for the new county agent in Toner County and I helped her work with approximately ten producers up there to get her started. We're fully staffed around this. We do not have a new district director yet. We're waiting for that. Other than that, we got the farm meeting situation coming up and there's a lot of skepticism out there this year. Things, you know, we only need a rain and we can still get a good crop. However, the weather patterns are missing us and as was mentioned earlier, eastern half of North Dakota is in a drought, moderate drought designation right now with actually right around Devil's Lake being the most severe in that area. We're not dry, we're not destitute for rain yet, but it does concern me having the weather patterns miss us, even though it's good. It's good, but it does concern me. There are a lot of things going on in the office, so it's, Cindy would say we seem to get busier every day, not every week. Any questions? Sure this week.
The four H livestock's out at Peterson Arena.
Are they?
The livestock show for four H is out at the pre-.
Peterson Arena. Well, you know, I should say thanks to Kevin too. Over all the years, he's been very gracious about getting us sand and stuff for the dogs to roam and they all look there. And they were very, very cooperative. They really did appreciate when we took over cleaning up for them, but they've been very, very good to work with.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
One thing to add, Bill, a request you had is in the works, so.
Okay.
You're gonna hit me on the head.
Okay.
I get on the collar and got buried for a while while I'm involved in it, so.
Okay.
But it's in the works. You should have it this weekend.
Okay.
Thank you. Good on Kevin, so long, leave it there.
Okay, we'll start with the projects updates. One that I didn't have listed on there is Ramsey County ten, so Apodarski, so we'll start with that. I think he's got most of his material hauled in there now. Probably plan on starting right after Louisville's come off. And he's got like twenty, twenty and a half days of work in days. Anticipates getting all done by then. Anything you wanna add to that? Got any questions on Ramsey County ten?
Be no problem getting it done, Kevin?
He's got twenty days. I think he will have it done. Livelihood damages are pretty steep, so I'm sure he's gonna work as hard as he can.
It's certainly possible.
Okay, any questions on ten? Next one, phase one of the truck route. That, that there's a plan over on that project that they couldn't start till after the Louisville's came off of Highway twenty. the low limits came off of highway twenty. So as soon as we see the low limits come off, highway twenty, we'll start running that. Like all the utility issues are taken care of now. We had some power lines that we were dealing with towards the end there, but that's all taken care of. So, anything on phase one of the truck route? Any questions? Okay, phase, go ahead.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Phase two is the, is the big one right now. We're working on the right of way. Did narrow up that right of way down on the south end by all those buildings to fifty feet. So we wouldn't get into their driveways, get into their parking lots, whatever. There's like Petersons and Petersons, whatever he calls himself, construction. And then just a little bit north there, there's a couple more smaller businesses that, the same thing, we, we moved them right away a little bit in, so it won't bother their parking areas either. And we're working on acquiring that, so there's four, four parcels that we'll need to require, acquire.
Can't just get any problems with them?
No, I think as long as, you know, we moved our right of ways in, so it's not going to bother their actual buildings or where they park their stuff. It's kind of ends at where their driveway ends or their approach ends. So we're hoping that helps as far as acquiring right of way. And then on the other side, the east side, we narrowed it up so we wouldn't have to deal with the trees that Strata has planted. Want to stay away from the evergreens that they, there's a row of evergreens planted there. I don't want to bother those, so. And that's sixty feet, which is still plenty of room for our project.
Is that proposed deflection for the highway project? Can I get reach back that part?
Not to the stratus part. It kind of, there's three sets of tracks are okay. The one closest to the US two and then further north, there's two sets. Ours will begin just past all of those railroad tracks. They just immediately pass them. There's a little short section in there where the state won't be, they'll be coming way past that first set of tracks, almost to the second set of tracks. So there's that little short section that we'll have to talk with the state, see how we want to handle that between us and them. We'll, we'll be dealing with the state on that pretty closely as far as how the right of way is going to work, who's going to purchase it, who's going to own it, that kind of stuff.
Have they got their right of ways yet? You're not sure?
They don't.
They don't need any more right of ways?
They do. They will need right of ways, yes.
This project is set for what, sixteen?
There's this, yes. Ours will be this summer, but we're starting just north of all, all the tracks. So there's going to be a little sliver in there that we're going to have to deal with in between.
Really? You know, the railroad coming in to do that overpass, you know, you wonder why the state's going to tie up this intersection at sixteen. They're going to have an overpass shutdown to. I would think they'd be sure they all love the year, but I hate, hate to see them. I hate to tell them to hold up on anything. They're going to do something.
I hear you. Especially the way the funding works, you know?
Are they going to have through traffic?
They'll have to. I, I, that's my assumption. When we talk to them. Yeah. Cause it's going to be, let's assume that the refinery goes through by then, they will have to be getting through there then in twenty sixteen.
Did we ever establish what the east bypass is? Where, is that going to go down Fourteenth Avenue here or?
No, we haven't. It's kind of a farm wrestling contest.
I was going to say, I just, they should get that done, shouldn't they? That's going to be a fight, I'm sure.
See, there's township roads involved there. That's where.
You bet.
So we kind of stab at it as far as.
As much as the county tries to stay out of this as possible.
We will help them with whatever they need. Help the township, whatever help they need. As far as, you know, right of way or whatever, those kind of things.
Well, you'd think they'd take it all the way out to the old sort of.
Right.
But I have a feeling you won't.
Right.
Is there any stipulations, Kevin, on narrowing up that right of way if it could be completely? It won't hurt the funding heavily.
No, it won't. The only thing is we may have to reduce the speed on it, which is to forty-five, which is excellent height anyway with the oil refinery there, Strata there, green elevator there, waste management. Reducing that to forty-five is going to be.
Probably mandatory.
Yeah, yeah. An old right of way. So as long as we reduce it to forty-five, we're not going to have any trouble with the shorter, or the narrower right of way.
Does doing a reduction of forty-five affect us on the senate bill and the surge funding?
It will, but we can get, we're almost certain we'll get a exemption.
Exemption, no, 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 no project.
Yeah. In fact, it'll start at the curve that I, if you were coming south there, the curve will be forty-five and I'll just be forty-one.
It's even forty-five, right?
Yeah.
We're going to talk about the DOT projects later or, or do you want to talk about them now?
Do I?
It appears that we're going to have turnoff lanes to the south highway two now, according to their picture, but we asked for that. I mean, it wasn't in the original plan. We asked for that back when we had the meetings. And then we gathered a petition together and signed it, sent it in from all the landowners on the south end and, and also from the airport and, and asked them to do that. I want to keep on that with Kim to make sure that those turnoff lanes get put in place. Those are.
That is in works. Did you guys see that picture of?
Yeah.
It looks like they are now, but I know they weren't in the original plan until they did this revale here per, per particular.
Right.
But can we make sure that that?
See, that's what they're asking. It's being, they are going to do it in twenty sixteen, but now they're asking for our input to anything we'd like to see.
Yep, so this is another challenge to get into that, so can we reiterate that?
That, that's why we need to talk to them about, maybe between these railroad tracks also, how it's going to be right of way issues. Who's going to own it? Who's going to buy and that kind of stuff.
Do we need to have that in again, Kevin? That's pretty quick, isn't it?
On the table?
Yeah.
So, that'll be after our next meeting, so if anybody has any ideas, we can bring them up at the next meeting and make sure that, everything that we need to get done.
Kevin, do you want to be in contact with the state on that before the next meeting?
Yeah, we're, we're way too many questions for us. We're going to stay on top of that.
Do you have the right of way south of the railroad tracks in between the still private companies that sit there?
The thirty-three feet would be statutory right of way, but that'd be.
Well, we need to go wider, so it's still probably owned by CHS there or whatever for layer plant. What would be, what waste management on the other side?
Uh, that Peterson.
Peterson.
He's got quite a bit.
According to the diagram, it looks like they'd be able to allow through traffic to go through because most of the construction is outside their present road footprint. And they should just be able to close that down and patch it through when it has to happen.
Right, yeah. They'll want to, my guess is they'll want to obliterate the old road once the new road is in place. Yeah, if you look at the south side, they're going to have to buy all that right of way and own it too, so.
Yep.
You know, that's kind of how it's going to have to work. Essentially, they'll buy and own the north side too.
So is that Davis land or is that weed land?
I don't know. That, that corner is.
Must be weed down.
It probably is weed, but that brown, I don't know how much that brown has there. It's probably weeds. I'm not sure.
We could find out real quick if you want to bring that up, but I don't know if that's out of the board. Okay.
Any alter on Davis two?
Uh, let me look. Big right thing on Davis two. Oh, another big thing. The state is going to allow us to do a change order on that project to allow close, since close because the board did it on phase one. So we want it to go through the bid process again. That's going to save us a bunch of time. It's, it's kind of beneficial. I mean, we went through the bid process and got our best possible prices on phase one, so we're just going to take those prices and apply them to phase two rather than rebid the whole thing. So.
State's all right with that?
Yes, they are. We, we didn't think we were going to get that to go through, but they, they allowed us to do it. It's a big savings to the county.
Yeah.
And time wise.
And, and we'll be able to solidify our plan as to where we're going to put the thirteen in the fit, in the classified and the class, and get that done so that the aggregate is right on the top for.
And that was another thing, the state.
Go ahead.
The state, we asked them if we could put all the ground line like we discussed at our last meeting and just be ready for paving. And they said, well, you know, it might be five, ten, fifteen years before you do your paving, so it's, it's not a good idea. We don't think it's a good idea to spend that money now. It may never happen. So they suggest that we reduce that fifteen inch lift to a total of eight inches. So that did get reduced. And then when we do do our paving job, we'll have to put it on there.
Well, that would put more out when you, if you pave it.
Yep. That was their suggestion. We will have a wide enough footprint when we do it the first time, so it won't be, we want to widen it anymore.
You won't have to get more right of ways and that kind of stuff.
No, that'll all be ready to go.
Problem based on.
You'll have to help the case.
Makes sense.
Thirty-seven inches. That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, you know, it could be such a thing that money runs out and we don't get a payment, so it, yeah, it does make sense.
That's basically what they did at the, down there in Benson County on the Wood Run Road.
Mm-hmm.
South of pavement. You know, they did it once, but they didn't take those curves out. But they put so much gravel on it. It must have held up. You know, they widened it, built it up, but they didn't take those curves out.
Right.
So I think that's what they got to do this year and then pave it, right? Is that where you're starting that land?
Yeah, improve the curves, yeah.
That then will pre up, uh, a little more cash per nine then?
Yes, I guess so. Okay, so since they allowed us to extend the contract for their bid, we have a estimate on what the phase two is going to cost them.
Don't worry, we don't have, we don't have numbers to put together or not.
We just have a spitball number of six hundred thousand, I believe.
Six hundred?
Yes.
Let's get eight inch on the whole thing then as well.
Yes, let's add in some work ground to phase one, two also. There, there's one bid I can borrow. We're going to have to have a one new bid I can call for borrowed materials. Other anything else, I say pretty much the same. And just talking back and forth with Greg, he's fine with it. He's close, so he's fine with it, so. I think he understands that, you know, as long as he's got all his materials available, he, he'll use the same prices. For some reason, he had to truck his material further. That might change, but he, he's anticipating that everything will stay the same.
So you think about six hundred and we do phase two? That's what you're using?
That's our estimate. We're using fifty-five hundred an acre for the right of way. So that is our estimate. That's what the I land was on phase one.
How far do you weigh on right of ways?
What's that?
How far away are we on giving the right of ways?
I don't know.
How many was it? Eight or six or how many was it?
There's four permanents and four temporarys, which the temporarys are, we just got to build an approach to, so nothing big there, but four permanents.
We have none of them?
Oh, yeah.
Not yet. Would they have been approached to people?
I'm not sure. We just finished our QA checks on the plats, so I'm not sure if the people have been approached yet.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, last one, phase two. That was the big, big things that were changing on phase two, so. Does anybody got any questions on that? That six hundred thousand includes the right of way and all the engineering.
Any other questions?
Next one, the thin lift on Ramsey eight. That's going to be just a slam dunk for. I don't know. You guys think and say that? We don't have to do any culverts on eight. It's just a thin lift, inch and a half overlay, so it's going to be fast, quick, easy.
Hopefully it's going to be a fun project.
Was there a next one?
Yes, I have.
Eight hundred thousand.
Yes, but we don't have it on bids yet.
Oh, yeah?
No.
And on Ramsey nine, we did have to solicit for engineering on that project and that those are due the tenth?
Yes.
Like Friday. So we have to select an engineering firm for that project before we can proceed on a design or anything like that. My question, I guess there is if we want to have a special meeting, assuming there's more than one proposal. Would we want to have a special meeting to review those proposals or interview the firms?
One of the proposals supposed to be in?
Friday, this Friday.
So we're still working under the assumption on that we're just going to do culverts?
We may be able to do the paving now since we were able to.
I say we have two point four million on the, on the senate bill and we're between the two projects. We're at one point four, which is quite a bit less than we assumed we were going to be at.
Right.
So, but by, but we can make that decision after we hire the engineer then to where we're going to go with it.
Yep.
Much easier?
The, the request for proposals did say paving also. So even if it becomes phase one, phase two, that engineering firm we select will be doing the culverts and the.
Well, they're going to engineer for the paving and then we can make the determination if we have the one.
We can do that however we want.
And we're going to try to do nine this year also?
Yep.
The culverts for sure.
And we think we'll have money to do the paving too.
Could we, um.
How many culverts would it take?
There was three.
You would just want approval from the commission on engineering, huh?
If we only have one proposal, then we could just handle it at the next meeting. But if the normal proposals then were required to interview, do an interview process.
Okay, what am I waiting for after the tenth then?
Call around and.
Inform us what's going on, I guess.
Well, it's good.
Make a decision then.
Correction to that. Uh, we are not actually required to do interviews anymore. The state came back and said that's no longer a requirement. They're recommending it. However, we do still have to go through the good faith efforts of comparing the different proposals. So that can be an internal decision if you like, but the state is recommending that interviews be done.
Their money, I guess we better do that.
I did, I did get a call from one other firm. It's the only reason I bring it up.
Hey.
Bartlet and West called and wanted to, she nailed the. Uh, I think that's it for projects. Any questions on our projects? Okay, number one, their, their DFT is also asking for comments on a project over by just west of Penn by the Multimart apartment. That looks like a slam dunk to me too. I mean, we, we don't have any interest there at all. I think it does intersect township road, but. So I don't think we have any interest in that project.
They're putting turning lanes in there?
Think they're just widening. I think they're just widening and.
Widing it over there?
Yep. I don't think there's turning lanes. There's not that much traffic there.
Solid, uh, slew there.
Yep, it's a really low area.
Very low.
Just upgrade the road.
Yeah.
So, no comments on that project. And then the other, number two was our, well, we just talked about the realignment of those intersections. And then number three, there is a, uh, need a motion to sign our summer maintenance contracts, listed the ones that are, that are in and need to be signed.
Did you get two more yesterday?
Yes. Overland and inland. All over too.
A motion to approve the summer maintenance contract for the second?
Second.
Second, all favors AI?
AI.
All opposed, motion carried.
I think we're missing five now. Four or five somewhere, not many. And the next, I need order just a small order, about fifty inch culverts, and they're gonna cost about four thousand dollars. So I'd like the motion to go.
Motion to approve. And motion to sue.
Second.
On the second. On the culverts. No problem.
Isla, aye. Olson?
Aye.
Licon?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
And then back to Nyack Water for county roads. I'm just curious if we wanna go ahead with that and share costs like we have been with the residents along the road. And get that added to paper.
Worked out good and vast, huh?
Yeah, it has, yes.
What, what is this in relation to?
Uh, there's that dust suppressor that was on the roads and, and we, just to make sure that everybody's interested in buying it, we make them pay for twenty-five percent of it. It's only like a dollar a foot, so it's not a big dollar ticket item. They end up paying twenty-five cents a foot. The only thing is that, uh, terminal road, that road that you live on, Mark, I'm not sure how it's gonna work out this year because we're thinking the township's gonna take over maintenance on that now, because the track route is gonna be all ours.
They want it?
We told them they have to.
Oh, I was gonna say, huh?
But, at their meeting, they, they talked to, and they, uh, instead of blading it six times a year, they're gonna blade it like, what was it, twenty-one times a year or something like that? So, they've contracted with us to already blade it more often. So they're aware of it.
They don't wanna put that on?
No, they didn't say that.
Cause everybody I've talked to now wants to see if we can go from pavement to pavement and do that, do that whole thing. I mean, you go out there right now and you know exactly where it stops and where it starts and.
Totally agree.
The road's just getting together way better.
Yep. I guess, I would visit with that township and see what they say. If they're not interested, then maybe, maybe we can take a look at it. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but.
What is it, half mile?
Three quarters.
Three quarter, yeah.
It's about, roughly six thousand miles, so three quarters of that.
Does the township?
Hundred percent of the cost would be six thousand mile.
Does the township understand how much good this does, or?
I think they do. They're just.
They've seen the effects, or would that be better than twenty-one times with the blade?
It would. There's probably. Anything to do with that out there.
I'd probably, I'd probably talk to the township.
Yeah, I just talked to, uh, Brian Pecunia the other day. He said, we need, we need to do the whole road. Especially with the amount of cars that are coming down.
Yeah, I agree.
He'd probably, they'd probably money ahead by macking it the whole way and taking it back down six with me. The township would be, yeah, he probably would be.
I don't know if you use the same dust control as our township, but, um, ours' cost really went up this year. That company sold that we were using before. And I don't remember what the costs were, but at, at our annual township meeting, the costs were substantially higher now for the dust controller than they used to be.
What, from a dollar?
Just so you know.
A dollar a foot to a dollar and sixteen cents a foot.
Well, you, you take care of that then, Kevin, and deal with the township, see what they wanna do, I guess.
Yeah, I'll, I'll come back to you guys, and if the township's not in favor of doing it, then, then I'll come back.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Otherwise, we will do our county roads, like, there's some up on Nine, we do it in front of Eiseners and those kind of places.
Is there more interest now that you did it, you know, last year?
So far, no. Just on the road you're on.
I can't remember where I was. Same deal, you know, I was out in the middle of nowhere, and all of a sudden, it was just a wonderful road, and then it was, you know, back to. Because it's, because it's so dry, I'm sure, you know, all the, all, you know, you can't, you guys graded today, and by five o'clock, then all those are back, because there's, there's nothing to pack in there. Yeah, it's just dust.
It wasn't meant to hold the road together, but it certainly helps.
Well, you know, you have moisture, you know, it holds the moisture.
But I will come back, you know, I'll have the township, just keep you up to speed. Uh, where are we up to? Oh. I did hire a new employee for the Craig District. It's Chad Britton. Started yesterday. And Scott Austin. I don't know what was in here, but anyway, he may need surgery again on his back. So he may not be back, might not be back for six, eight weeks, maybe even a little longer, so. I don't know if I'll have to hire him at a part-time position until he comes back. But just anywhere, we might be headed down that track to hire him part-time for a couple months. Just to fill in. That's just kind of a heads up. I don't know if we need a motion for part-time, do we? Just so you guys know. And the last one, we did, results on bids for our supplies and our projects. Um, Morris Seal Coat with our old bid on our Seal Coat project again, so. I just came from an asphalt conference. This is a project that, uh, part of it's on Ramsey Nine that we're looking at overlaying. And this chip seal is also going on the same part of that project. And at the asphalt conference, they're, down in Texas, they're, before they do their overlay projects, they do these chip seals. And the tracks, the transfer tra- the transverse cracks and the longitudinal cracks are staying away for three to five years, depending on weather. And, so, you know, we had the question of, well, do we go ahead and chip seal this, and then all of a sudden they come through with an overlay? And I didn't know what to do, and I thought about this, and then at this conference, they mentioned this, so. Just thinking out loud, I thought maybe we should try it and see how, because there is quite a few cracks on that road.
So you, you chip seal previous to the overlay?
Yep. Well, nobody, I mean, they couldn't even tell us why it was working, other than it's a polymer type oil. It's stretchy. If you can call it oil stretchy.
So it's kinda like epoxy oil again?
Any other counties or states trying it, or?
No, it's kind of brand new.
What's state say?
They're, they're, they're jaw, but like, why is this working?
Uh, Texas is a long place away, it could be.
Their, their weather's way different than ours, too. So I don't know. If we wanna wait till, uh, this paving project may not get done till August, September, and that'll be too late to chip seal probably, so. Or do we wanna go ahead and see if we can prevent the transfer crack, uh, transfer of the cracks?
How far stretch is it? How many miles?
Nine miles.
What's the, uh, general cost on chip sealing for that?
Those nine miles would probably be, well, just a rough estimate is ten thousand. No, that's not great. What is the total bid? There's a twenty-one mile project here.
Morris, is that the one you're on?
Yep.
It's eighteen thousand, fifteen thousand?
So, took twenty-one miles, that's three hundred eleven thousand.
Right.
And that's for just the chip sealing portion?
Yep.
For twenty-one mile?
Yep.
Fifteen thousand mile.
So essentially, we wanna spend an additional hundred, thirty-five thousand to see if it works.
Yep. Right. Or a whole docked out next year?
On whole project or no?
We would do the first half of the project, or the, there's also the Hannon, the road that goes south to Hammond.
Yeah.
We'd do that regardless.
So this, this is free agency on the due diligence.
Yep.
We're gonna get some, try and get some plots to see.
I could see it's a contract.
Try one section and not the other, and do an app. That way we'll know.
The armway, they have to do a nine mile.
At fifteen thousand a mile?
Like half of it or something, they're thinking, or two mile section.
Or if there's a spot that's exceptionally bad, we'll try it there.
Dollar section and do an app.
See what, see what we can work out. What was your comment, Bill?
If they had a section of the road that, you know, they wanted to try it on that was exceptionally bad or something like that, that maybe we could see if it would work there. You know, if the contractor will do that for you. We got some time to figure that out.
Yeah, I'll do it with the contractor, too.
Have, anybody asked the contractor to see if they think it'll work?
No, I haven't talked to them about it. No.
I think that'd be a good idea, I think.
Yeah. I'm sure it's brand new to him, too.
They do this all the time, so.
He doesn't do the overlay projects, but the, the question to him is that, you know, can we hold off for here on this project, or? Definitely visit with him on it. So, I guess my, uh, recommendation would be to accept that low bid, and then we just negotiate with them as, as to how much we want them to do.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept a little bit on that. That's on the Seal Coat.
And we're using Morris, right?
Morris, yes.
Is that on the Seal Coat or the chip seal?
Same thing.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Martins?
Aye.
Licon?
Aye.
Isla? Aye. Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
And the second one is gravel project down Turnback Seventeen up by Starkwater. I had sent letters to both townships. It's a township line there, and they're, according to their policy, they're supposed to pay for twenty-five percent of the project. They both agreed to pay for twenty-five percent of the project, so my recommendation would be to accept those silver constructions of a little bit.
So.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to accept silver construction for that gravel bid.
Is that, uh, that dollar figure with twenty-five percent out of the order, that's our?
That's a hundred percent.
Yeah, and they all reimburse.
So I'll reimburse back on that then?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Martins?
Aye.
Licon?
Aye.
Isla? Aye. Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
The, um, my voice is working fine this morning. The, uh, quotes for paving and hot mix overlay projects, those are just, uh, gonna be really, really small projects, so. My suggestion would be to accept both quotes and then figure out who's got the closest flat as far as mileage. Mileage is a big part of it, so. I would suggest that we accept both quotes. From Dry State and paving and Strata.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion? Does that affect their second?
Second.
We have a second? Any other discussion, questions? Roll call.
Isla? Aye. Olson?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Licon?
Aye.
Brown?
And the last was just the road oil. We just had one bid for the road oil, and they look like a fair bid, so. I would recommend we accept that quote, tell them that.
Some more.
Okay, the motion to accept the road oil bid, your second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion, questions? Roll call.
Olson?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Isla? Aye. Licon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Thing else, Kevin, you wanna?
Do you wanna go through any updates from the hospital or?
Oh, the, are you guys up to speed on the bill, house bills and, or the Senate bills? I think it'd be eleven seventy-six, sounded like it passed this morning. Or last night, one or two. Well, they did, did you get the amendment to change the funding to relate to the Upper Great Plains Technology Institute's need study rather than CMC miles? We, we lose a little bit of money that way. It's like four to five hundred thousand dollars. But, um, and that, 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 the Senate bill, or House Bill eleven seventy-six, the money won't be available until twenty sixteen. For projects that we haven't even started to look at yet. It's gonna be just preliminary numbers. It's gonna be like one point eight.
That makes sense. Can't give.
They're gonna need to build more this year, yeah. I think the townships are getting some more money out of that, too. I don't know what the dollar amount is. I've heard so many numbers.
Five, it was suggested five thousand.
Well, that's all I have.
But funding for the engineering will become available in July.
Yeah. That's a good deal.
Yes, so that we could.
Start designing then.
Yeah.
Hey, any other question for Kevin? Thank you.
Thank you.
Resource Board, I don't know if they're interested yet or not.
Should I see if they're over there?
Good idea, Kevin. Thank you. Please get down, do some of these new business, I guess. Memorial Building Discussion, what, that one, are they coming?
We're not even over there.
Oh, they are. We didn't wanna talk to them, we didn't wanna talk to them. Memorial Building Discussion up here.
Actually, I wanted that one put on the thing. I have rented the memorial building two times in the last year. Both times, somebody has come in from the park board and given me a bunch of grief about, you know, we have neighbor Jim tonight, you know, he needs to be gone. I'm just kinda curious if anybody else has complained about it, and, and, you know, they're getting a pretty good deal for this building, and, you know. I paid two hundred seventy-five dollars, and I got chewed out twice the last time I rented it. You know, I had, I came in, I rented it the day before. They didn't take down their, their nets or anything. We had to wait two hours for them to come and take their nets down. And then that afternoon, when I was over with some younger, younger guys came in and wanted, you know, told me that they were gonna play basketball, and I said, yeah, I gotta play basketball. I just rented once. It's park free time. Too bad. Well, then they left, and they came back a little while later and said, well, we'll help you carry your stuff out. And I said, no, no you won't. But I'm just kinda curious on how many keys are out there and, you know.
Who handles the scheduling?
When the park board has it, um, Terry, um, yes, and Roger did contact him and talk to him about the situation, and I'm hoping it's.
Result?
Resolved.
Yeah, I'm sure it probably is. I just wanted, you know, people to know that. And, you know, like I said, the keys, you know, how many keys are pulling around for, for the memorial building over there?
There is a master scheduling? No.
Well, they, and when we contact Terry and we tell them that there is a, we contact right away as soon as there is something going on, and they're supposed to come in and take the nets down, and this particular situation, I don't know who dropped the ball, but as soon as they called them and found out. this particular situation, I don't know who dropped the ball, but as soon as they called him and found out that the nets were still up, he took a while, but they got them down.
Okay.
And I, and I don't think it's Roger's responsibility to have to take those down, you know, Roger was all willing to come and do it. This isn't Roger's job.
He was supposed to do it.
Yeah.
But it took a while.
That's basically all that, I just wanted.
North Coast Insurance Reserve Fund Annual E.
Just wondering if anybody wants the, help each other.
Anybody interested?
Hopefully we'll be planting.
Next, next week.
It's next week?
Well, no, it's.
Macy's. Macy's.
Well, yeah, hopefully that. Hopefully, we'll be doing some work.
There you go.
I'll have to check, ask everyone that wants one.
You know, talking about that, they sent the letter saying we've got some money here to.
Yes.
Refunding one point five million total, so what?
I'll, we haven't gotten the letter yet exactly how much or the check.
I'm just kinda curious.
It should probably be here before the next meeting, usually it arrives before we meet, but this year it hasn't, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anybody gonna go?
If anybody doesn't go, do you want to just have me sign this and send it in? It's kind of for the election, for the proxy, yeah, if I don't go, I'll.
Cindy Schwer has been, been involved quite a bit for a long, long time and I think she'd be a good candidate.
Who?
Cindy Schwer. Where it's coming.
She's been at my strength a while.
Thirty-eight years.
That's a while.
And she's served on a lot of boards down there, I think, including the insurance reserve.
Oh, I'm sorry, she worked for coordinator for the Cheyenne Valley Care Center for thirty-eight years, she's been a member of the Nerdurk Board for, since two thousand twelve, sorry about that. And she's been, uh, Barnes Company Commissioner for over fourteen years, so. I was gonna say, thirty-eight years.
I guess that's what you're voting on there.
We've got a lot of people in one that has that.
Sorry about that.
Okay, anything else on that?
Just let me know.
Reading your letter.
Call if you know nice. Or this week.
Approved site authorization? Motion to approve, we have a motion to approve, your second.
Second.
Oh, there was a, aye. All right, now, oh, there's a motion carried. Employ handbook review and recommendation, because we pretty much know without them. Questions, roll. Update on Ivy equipment.
Um, the handbook, you guys decide if you want to accept that and sign a contract.
We have a motion.
Yes, 'cause it's a contract.
So we send the contract, he updates it and then brings it back to us just with the updates to.
Right, to look at, okay, and then.
One thing we should look at is our, uh, drug, drug.
Our drug test.
Drug.
Everyone got it?
The drug testing.
Yeah, and he does have that, drug and alcohol testing, that's one of his updates.
Oh, good, good.
It says, I would recommend listing the drugs that are tested, this includes the misuse of prescription drugs. At the former county, we have employees that's positive for drugs when they are used, there's supposed, something in prescriptions. He said he would update that better, so, and then once he updates it, maybe I'll just send the board all the copy and maybe the department has to give it to and then if we want, there's other, there's some of the boring.
Yeah, those do look like very good recommendations.
Yeah, they sure did, and he had a lot of them, I was, I was surprised.
And you made the comment that ours wasn't that bad compared to other counties, so.
Yeah.
With all the recommendations, you mean some counties must be far behind?
That's one good thing about looking over, working for county governments and working over that many, if you get, if you get some consistency with it.
Yeah, I think you'll be, do the county a lot of justice.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the contract.
A motion to approve the contract, your second? So we have a roll call for that money in there?
Yes, 'cause when he sent it.
And how much is it?
It's two thousand for this year and after that it's two hundred dollars per year for the updates, if there's any changes in the law. And I'm assuming questions, if I have already, there are many questions. Like Lonnie used to help us if we have, if you can't determine what exactly, sometimes when they put it in the handbook, it's like you have to wait until you figure out the reading of it, and Lonnie read it this morning and he was okay with it.
Yeah.
The contractor.
Roll call.
Isler?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Laiwon?
Aye.
Brown?
Okay, now we can go with the update on Ivy equipment armory. What are we doing there?
Um, basically, I sent you an email, Steve and I are working with, um, AVI to get some quotes to replace a Polycom which went down during the surge and, um, in reviewing our insurance, um, it's through K and K, it's our boiler insurance and equipment insurance. And I talked to a Jackie, yeah, she's located in New York if I'm not mistaken, and she said to get her some estimates as soon as possible. And I think as of yesterday, we haven't heard from her.
That's a quite a long, I have to.
You haven't heard from her? No, so we need to probably remind them again to get that. And with that, if everything goes all right, the cost would be about the two hundred and fifty dollar deductible is, so. But they want us to make sure that we include everything, even if we install it, what it would cost per hour. I'm assuming Steve, will we have AVI come up into it, do you think, or?
Well, there's more that may be replaced, but, then.
Yeah, the sound system.
Sound was going bad before.
Right.
Maybe some upgrades that Roger, I mean, Bill wanted in there. Otherwise, solid, yeah, I don't want the, the final cost later, but the NDSU is waiting to, before committing any shared cost share.
Will they come down, is it, is it, no?
Um, AVI?
They're in Bismarck.
Bismarck.
So we need a, a motion?
Um, at this point, I don't think we do yet because we haven't had any words or, it's just, we just wanted to make the board aware what was going on. And I'll, we'll give it up and running, because I think there is some classes coming up.
But nothing, nothing else was damaged that.
Right.
During the search, okay.
That was.
Yeah, that was plugged into a surge protector and others, equipment on the same surge protector is fine.
Is fine, but that.
Any other questions, comments?
So we really should give credit to, everybody in the courthouse uses good surge protectors, so. I don't know if people in homes and stuff that lost all their equipment and everything that bought a cheap one.
This should be part of act into us if they allow, you know.
Yeah.
Sounds good, we'll back up to unfinished business, farm exemption. I'll read one of this.
I think the reason I had to have him is if one of those had created come on the board. And she was, we need to discuss it anymore, I mean, we just.
Open for comments here. Eleven days old, so.
If there was ever a motion on the table to not, um, follow the law and the farm exemption, I think we should take it off the table.
We're not sure if there was one?
Well, I'm saying that there, if there was one, I mean, we don't know if there was, Terry said there was.
I, I don't think there was ever a motion not to follow the law.
We're not sure about that.
There was, there was just a general consensus of the board to not send out the application. It's not a requirement to send out the application, it's a requirement to tax them, so it was never even thought of to go out and tax all the farmhouses and then make them apply. It's not a law to send the application out, it's a law to tax them. And I think we could hire a couple more people easily if we're gonna tax all the farm residences, measure them up and put them on the tax rolls and then have them apply to get them taken off. It's not a doable thing. But I, I do need some direction, I'll be meeting with the majority of the townships in the county here within the next couple months, that they're, with their board. And just the amount of questions we've got so far, I need some guidance on the way we're gonna proceed with this, you know, so I can inform the townships.
Okay, it gets us up to the commission to come to a consensus on what to do here, so I'm open for suggestions or comments.
I guess we just have to make a determination of twofold, are we going to send the, the exemptions out, uh, the paper for them to send back? One and two, prioritizing how do we develop a list of everyone that should be getting that, uh.
Form.
Form, I mean, that's gonna be the hard part. I mean, how do we compile a list?
I think the assessors in each township know of all the barnsteads or residences in their, in their district, it's as easy as handing them out at, at a meeting, but we missed that opportunity. Now we'll have to go by mail. The other thing is, is do you wanna start, there's two, two parts of the thing that are really the driving factors and that's the forty thousand dollars non-farm income and the ten acres. Like I stated before, the ten, the ten acre thing permits only four acres and doesn't have anything to do with farm plan. And that one's, that one's pretty obvious. And, uh, if you have to go so far as to go for incomes and stuff like that, like Terry said, they, they, they should be required to bring them in, so. So when you hand out the paperwork for the farm residence exemption, if they don't bring them in, then they apparently don't qualify for it. If they do bring them in, like our exemption that we got today, then they have to bring the evidence. I don't see where it would be very difficult at all, the difficult part is to put a value on the place because that takes a little time, but. But I think we, I think.
How many townships are you assessing at this point, Jerry?
I think we're up to twenty.
Twenty out of thirty-six. So in all twenty of those townships, you would have to go out and assess every barnstead?
Well, I, you know, and I, I think we'd have to establish a procedure we're gonna use. You know, how are we gonna, I talked to Linda Lederer quite a while on, on this subject and, um, she said that they went through in the county that she.
Lived in?
Lived in, or, I don't know, she still does. And they used, um, their GIS coordinator to identify barnsteads on erudal photos. You can look at them and, and then identify those, um, then you gotta come up with a list of owners, which is pretty easy off the GIS. You know, you can see who owns the barnstead. And other counties drive them over. Just in the new townships we picked up now, you know, I just see all the barnsteads I've never been by. You know, if we aren't assessing in that township by, we don't go drive through the township and down every load. There's a lot of barnsteads out there that, you know, we don't even know if they're being taxed, though we check our records. But, um, I think, and then we gotta establish whether or not we're gonna do it every year, or every third year, or every fifth year, as far as making them prove their income. Linda said they use their state's attorney. I'll be honest with you, when I get into some of these farmers' income taxes, eighty pages long, I can sit and look at it all day. For one.
Are we in over our heads then?
Well, I'm not a CPA, I do my own taxes.
Oh, we're in over our heads.
If we're gonna start reviewing, no doubt we need some help if we're gonna review it, review income.
Well, it sounds to me like you needed coordinated effort from the entire county, you're not, we're not talking about just the tax director's office, we're talking about GIS, we're talking about the state's attorney, we're talking about all different departments, and that's gonna have to include the auditor and the treasurer's office, I mean, there's no way it can't.
Well, just the amount of people that have came in and said, because it got on the front page, is our neighbor paying? Well, we look at it and say, no, well, the wife makes sixty thousand dollars. Well, you know, they're, if the mushroom has started, no, it's, so I don't, I don't see how we can do nothing.
If they fill out the application and say that they qualify, you know, that.
Well, yeah, we're not.
Then it remains, then it remains to be challenged, but, but I would say ninety-five percent of the people are gonna be honest, Jerry, and they're gonna say whether or not they qualify. And you're gonna agree with it.
Well.
There might be one or two people out there that you disagree with, but.
I don't think they know in a lot of cases.
Absolutely, absolutely right.
They don't know if they qualify or not.
I think that, that's my assumption as well, is most people just assume since they're living on a farm or they're farming, they qualify because they don't know the stipulations and the guidelines of the law.
Exactly.
I don't think they're gonna be dishonest.
No, I don't think.
But I, I don't think, I think even if they fill out the form and fill it, send it in, quite a few of them don't qualify, even though they would say they do, they don't. Because it's not just black and white on your income tax form whether you qualify or not.
Yeah.
It's pretty black and white on the essential form, though.
But I'm talking about even the forty thousand non-farm income?
They know what they, they got.
I just looked at one, the non-farm income was ninety thousand. Then you deduct everything below forty.
But you don't deduct for income made on non-farm, it's just the farm income that you use those deductions for.
No.
You don't turn it into a income tax return.
If, if you have a, say a custom.
You're out there farming and your off-farm income is making up for the farm, then it's all considered off-farm, as long as you're below forty.
It's not black and white.
No, it's not, it is not black and white.
I'm not in favor of starting looking at people's income tax return.
And I, I think you just might have to, to be fair, because.
Agree with it.
Yeah. And that's a bigger job than I can handle.
Pardon me?
I had to do it twice since I was on board, so.
Look at income taxes.
And it's private, so. They bring them in and look at them?
No, you don't turn it into income taxes returns or. Wow, IRS, they really have a big one.
It's just that there's certain expenses allowed on your income taxes that aren't allowed in this, so you gotta go through the income tax return from the front end to the back end. And there is a form the state has in Excel format that we can go and, you know, look at line twenty-three and put that in that link, and once you fill it out, it will, it calculates it for you.
If the IRS forms, everybody knowledgeable about, you put all your income down, all your expenses down, you know this well, this was off-farm income or this was off-farm expense. You know, it all goes together.
And I.
So if it ends up to be below forty thousand, there's nothing you can say.
Then the fifty percent comes in.
Then, yeah, see, then, then it's the fifty percent, it, it's.
Like Myrnus just said here a little bit ago, how much help are we gonna have to hire in this county to enforce this? And do we wanna be big brother?
On, on the other hand, I would, I would guess that we're gonna pick up a hundred houses. Just, just.
You're guessing.
That's strict guess.
You're guessing.
I think in January or February, I asked you if you had any knowledge on how many are out there and you said, no, I would believe you don't.
No, I don't have a clue, but I know that twenty have came in since this hit the newspaper that don't qualify, just from other people coming in and saying my wife or my neighbor's wife or my uncle's wife or if we picked up a hundred and the average would be a thousand bucks, that's a hundred thousand extra dollars in the county over and the school, and so it is a big thing. Because I think there's a lot of houses out there that don't qualify that aren't in tax.
What did you say now, you think if you pick up a hundred thousand in taxes?
Yeah.
How much are we gonna spend to get this employment? How much do we wanna add to go with it?
I'm guessing that you're gonna need to hire someone on it for temporary basis.
What does one employee cost, about eighty, ninety grand?
It depends on what you start him at.
Four.
The mid-frame, say if you start him at forty thousand a year, or if you do, are you thinking temporary, full-time?
I'm thinking temporary.
You have to go full-time.
Why would you have to go full-time?
We're gonna get, we're gonna get temporary.
Or thirty hours a week, I guess. Why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you advertise for somebody temporary? A lot of people out there that would like to have a, a part-time job don't need the benefits or want the benefits.
Let's see what a full-time person costs.
Well, if you take the full-time and then you put the benefits in there, another twenty thousand. Well, if you take the full-time and then you put the benefits in there, another twenty thousand, retirement, probably sixty-five.
How fair is it to the people who are paying taxes?
Depends on every single family. That was per family.
Because I know about a dozen people are gonna come in with a tax form and hand it in, and you're not gonna be able to look at anything for them. You're just gonna give them the tax exemption because that's what you're doing for everybody else. And there's about a dozen people out there that are gonna come in and do it, Jerry. And you won't be able to look at anything because you're not looking at it for everybody. So it can get turned around and, and be the other way too. So I think it's, I don't think it's fair to the people who are paying taxes if the people who should be paying taxes aren't. Okay?
Adam, when you were at, when you were at the meeting in Bismarck, did you visit with any of the other county people, county commissioners who do or do not enforce the law or work? Okay, what, what did you gather from that?
Just in limited conversation with, I think I talked with Nelson County and I think there was one other, but I can't recall the county it was. And they are enforcing it. They are sending out the paperwork. They set up a standard where, at least in Nelson County, if I remember correctly, again, Little Quoey specifically, but they developed a list, they sent out the paperwork to everyone. To start it, basically, they received the paperwork back. Anybody that said that they didn't qualify for the exemption, they automatically put on that they were gonna go out and assess the property, obviously. Then they made, the people that said they did qualify had to have backing documentation. And then they set the standard, I believe, that every three years, they had to reopen it because it's one of the reasons, basically. And it, and they said it was, it was a large undertaking and it was a big process, but they put on quite a few homes, you know, and it-
Did they add help?
I don't believe they did. I didn't, I don't remember asking them that, to be real honest.
They're right over here, we should be able to ask.
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to their auditor, Jack. He was very open about it and their process. And I think that's what it comes down to for us is, there's other people that have done this. We don't have to go into it blind. We can determine what it's gonna take us to do it. And, and I guess, I come from the aspect of, if we develop a list of who needs to receive these forms, get the forms to them, and then we receive them back first, we don't have to go back and measure up everyone's house. We just have to determine at that point who qualifies and who doesn't. And if they don't qualify at that point, then we know at that point they need to be added to the list to be assessed. So that'll probably cut our job down fifty percent right off the top of the bat. And then the people that say they do qualify, then at that point, we have to develop policy, I believe, to make a determination on do they need to, how, how are they gonna justify it? And, and from there, we'll probably cut our workload down automatically because there's gonna be a lot of people that still do qualify, and rightfully so. But I guess, I, I come from the standpoint of, I have a hard time not enforcing the law when that's the law. You know, we took an oath to enforce the law. And if it's the state law, I mean, I, I, I just, I can't see how we can't do it, especially now since the public knows what's going on.
The assessors in the townships would start the list first and then bring it to the county, right? But it'd have to the township assessors to do it.
I think so, but-
We can't do sixteen townships, but not in the twenty in the Jerry's we lived in. Jerry's gonna have to go twelve, twenty-
I understand that.
I guess I would come from the standpoint of, it's what the, seven, available today. We have all the way, we can develop the list and, at my point, in my thought process, we've got a few months to develop the list, get the paperwork out, and we still have plenty of time in there to develop who needs to be assessed next year. I mean, we've got time to get this done now. We're gonna do it, we gotta do it right. So I guess, my thought is, Jerry talks, you know, you're, you're gonna be talking in the next month or so, like you said, with the other assessors and the townships and things like that, comes up with a plan on how to develop the list, basically. So we can make sure that we get everyone, I mean, because I think it's gonna be a little harder than just handing out the paperwork. I'm gonna have to disagree with you slightly on that, just, I mean, there's a lot of ones out there that are owned by somebody that doesn't live on a farm anymore, that we aren't taxing now, probably. That maybe they farm in their previous, they're renting or whatever. They might not live here anymore. They might be in Bismarck, they might be in Fargo. You know, we're gonna have to figure out how to get those addresses. And that's gonna take a little bit of time.
Well, they should be on their farm tax return, their farm land tax return.
I understand, I know, it shouldn't be, but it's just gonna take time to compile a list and do it properly to make sure everybody receiving the form needs to receive the form.
If they don't live on that farm, they're renting that farm to somebody else that works it down, that farm's taxable.
I'm not saying it's not, but I'm just saying we're probably not taxing it now. So we still have to track down who owns it and where they live. And, and if we don't do it properly, and we have, say, X, a hundred people that should be receiving exemptions and only ninety-eight of them received the exemptions, everybody's gonna know about the two that didn't, and they're gonna be happy about it. Or, or gets the paperwork, they should say. So we have to make sure that we do it fair and equitable.
And you're, in, in your and my line of thinking in that we are not gonna go out and arbitrarily go into a township and say, you, I don't think you should be exempted. We are gonna do this across the board. We are not going to single anyone out. I'm upset that anyone had it brought to their attention and in a way that they deemed as being threatening. And I want, I want it on the record that we are not out there to threaten anybody. We just wanna do what is the- We're not threatening someone. If it's, if it's come to our attention that we're not following the law, then it's our job as commissioners to follow the law.
I, I would agree with that to the point that some people are gonna perceive it as a threat.
As a threat.
I, I don't deny that fact. But I still think that by sitting for elections, sitting in these chairs, we sit here to enforce the law. And I, I, I know that people probably, some people aren't gonna be happy, but at that point, we're making the decision, unfortunately.
Yeah, what Linda didn't know when the law was put in place, but what I've been told have been there for thirty years.
Oh, it's been there for a long time. I, I was, I forgot to ask it. When did they change the number to forty thousand? I'm sure that's fairly easy.
Yeah, it was twenty-five to forty.
Yeah, it used to be twenty and then twenty-five and then forty.
Forty-five, now we're up to forty, yeah.
And, and maybe that, maybe that number needs to be higher now. I mean, I don't disagree with that, but that's not a process that we have a right to make a decision on.
No, that's the thing-
We have to live by what the state says, unfortunately.
And, and you know, maybe we need to petition the state to reach, you know, I don't know.
We have to work with our legislators.
When I asked why it stalled at forty, they said, because if you're making forty thousand dollars of non-farm income, what's fifteen hundred dollars in taxes to you? Because that's about what it'd be. You're benefiting by forty thousand, give a little bit back.
You talked about Nelson County, and I talked to Adam Levine and, or what was it?
Dave, David, I've been telling her, yeah.
David Levine and Towner, and he said they're, they're not in the township. They aren't doing nothing at all.
Well, they're at the, the township assessors meeting previously, I said on that. And they're, they have a new tax director, correct?
I'm mentoring in Towner County, they're doing it.
Yeah, and they said previously they had, he, he said, they, that tax director stood, and they had a couple of commissioners there as well and other, not commissioners, people that were assessors. And they said they had previously done it, but it had been a while. I think, can't remember what the date was, they said probably two thousand and eight or something was the last time they sent out the documentation. So they have done it in the past. I don't know what their commission plans are, but that's what their claim was.
Well, maybe Dave wasn't a commissioner.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Dave was a commissioner at that time.
I don't know, why did you start the process and then quit?
Or maybe their equalization director at that point sent out the documentation without asking the commissioner, just did it, I don't know. That's neither here nor there.
It's middle of the stream and decided to go back.
Oh, that's possible. I don't know.
I think, I think what's happened in Towner County now is they have a-
I think, now, let's make sure.
I called their in. I talked to the tax director. When you said they weren't doing it, I called their. Because you contradicted exactly what I said.
And they're not doing it.
They are doing it. I called their after you told me they weren't.
That's what David Levine told me.
Well, I called there to make sure that I knew what I was talking about because I am mentoring in Towner County and Pabler County. So I'm, I'm mentoring other tax directors, so I expect to know what I'm mentoring. She went out, drove the entire county, her and her husband, actually. If they didn't have a paper on file, they sent one out and they're getting it back or they're gonna tax them. They're definitely enforcing the farm residence exemption. They drove the, every county road.
I'll talk to David Levine after we do this.
And I know David too.
Maybe it's still, like, commissioners don't know what's going on.
Maybe, yeah, maybe the county commissioners don't know.
Maybe it's just been enforced this whole time and it's just on the books, that's how they've done it, you know what I mean?
Doesn't sound like it to tell, huh?
But again, you're talking about Towner County and you're talking about Nelson County. And there's small counties, you guys, compared to Ramsey County. It's, it's a much smaller job.
It's gonna be a larger undertaking here. I just don't know about that.
Go into Jerry's office and take a look at the pins on that map in there. Probably eighty to, eighty to ninety percent of it's already been done within the, within the twenty mile circumference of that area. What's already been done? All those farmsteads have either been purchased by somebody who works them down or, you know, they, they, they're not occupied by farmers. I mean, there's how many pins in that map? Hundreds.
We have a map that Steve made of everything in the county now with a dot on it. You know, that, with a taxable structure on it. Those are the easy ones, the ones that don't even- You know, one tool that other counties have used, Grand Forks County is the one I looked at, is for the income tax records, they, they also allow the person that's asking for the exemption to have their CPA sign and get notarized that they qualify.
Then you don't have to look at them.
Put the monkey on the back of the person that wants the exemption.
Exactly. I think that sounds fab, that sounds fabulous. Then we don't have to get involved in looking at people's income tax return. Then it's between the person asking for the exemption, the accountant, and God. We don't have to have that, anything else to do with it.
I thought that was interesting anyway. That's, that's what they use.
I, I fully agree with that concept.
And it puts the burden on the CPA.
We should ask, we should ask Linda if that's legal.
Yes, we should. Good question. You ask Linda, yeah.
Of course it isn't. The person that's filing an income tax wants to know if they qualify. They can ask their company. Company don't know.
From a GIS standpoint, Steve, how hard would it be to dot all the farmsteads? I mean, what kind of process we looking at there in terms of difficulty for you?
Not terribly, I don't think. I guess, I guess there could be a few missed, but I get, like, all the nine-one-one addresses from the law enforcement center and-
Yeah, but they should have a nine-one-one.
Compared to everything else, that, I don't think it would be very hard at all.
I'm not sure, but it seems to me, I've heard from the FSA office, and I wanna say four hundred farmers in Ramsey County. That's what I wanna say. And I, what do you think, Adam? Would that be close?
Oh, gosh, I don't even know. That's a good question. I think it'd be higher than that.
I think the twenty-ten census that said it was, I think it's between five and six hundred. You know, just the census bureau.
I would guess a little higher probably.
But I, yes, that's gone down since ten. Probably significantly.
I guess-
I would say that five or six hundred, the number has gone down since the two thousand and ten census.
So you have?
Oh, if people would have been-
I think it's not, then guys, the actual-
I'm sure to say, probably a state's doing it. I'm sure you actually don't have a little bit, because we got a farmer in my neighborhood.
Okay.
A lot of young guys. I'm, I'm the old, young guy in my neighborhood. That tells you.
Wait till you hear the old guy.
Probably won't be long.
What other discussion we got on this?
I mean, obviously we don't need a motion to do anything, I don't think, but I think it's just a matter of allowing the staff to determine what the plan, you know, how we're gonna develop the list against, of how we're gonna find the home.
We need to come up with an agreement there from the staff on how much labor is it gonna take?
Yeah, I, I just, just the preliminary idea, what it's gonna take to get the job done for developing lists, what they think it's gonna cost us to do, are we gonna have to hire staff? And then we can kinda look at it going forward.
And the question is, Jerry, if you got this staff person and these padded hours in your office, would you need them permanently? I mean, would they, would you need someone new permanently to do what? Once it's measured and on or off the books, what do you need them for after it's done?
Well, it depends on how many more townships we pick up, you know, too. We've picked up a good workload just with the four or five that we just picked up.
Right. Well, you're over half now.
Yeah, and it, and it's going that way. There's gonna be more. But I don't know, you know, some of the townships, you know, when they have two houses in, that's not a whole big job.
No, it's not a big deal.
But we have houses just outside of Devil's Lake that we aren't doing currently that have forty or fifty houses in the township that are taxed already. You know, so I don't think there's too many in that township either that need to be taxed. If there's a hundred residences and buildings to go measure up and put a value on, that's another big job. We don't know until we get into it how much we're just gonna be-
Oh, yeah, that's, that's part of it too.
But we're not-
The hard part is putting the, doing the assessment.
Yeah, that's the hard part. I, I think-
But I don't think you initially have to do the assessment.
No, no, we have to get, I, I-
Send out the letter and, and-
That's my estimation, is get the list together and make sure we have a solid, complete list and then send the letter out right as fast as we can.
Right now, I think, I'm just wondering, you know, what your feelings are. If we're going that direction, I can tell the townships that we can't do anything till after June anyway. We're, we don't have any spare time right now till after June because we've got to get the townships we're doing and the cities' assessments finalized by June. So we can't do anything till after that anyway, unless Steve could maybe try and come up with a, a map of ones that aren't being taxed, you know, give us something to look at, I guess.
Could you, does Steve have access to who is and who isn't taxed on the GIS?
We've already got the ones that are taxed on there.
Well, you gotta do this on the Marshall viewer and put you on the farmsteads.
Okay, well, just tell.
Yeah, well, yeah, you go, you go on the partial viewer and you go to a farmstead if it's over ten acres and it's worth twelve thousand bucks, you know, it's just agricultural value.
There's no, anything that's, that's under twelve thousand.
Well, I, I'm just saying, for instance, because obviously if there's a house there, it's gonna be worth it.
There's a lot of older farmsteads that are exempt that would be valued at less than twelve thousand because it's just been exempt for since then. But the value of the land is only like ten dollars an acre for tax purposes. So if it's a hundred acres and it's a thousand dollars, then you know it's ag land. But if it's twelve or fifteen thousand, there might be some structures on there that are taxed for.
We looked at a couple yesterday that the house had no windows in, the door was off. You know, it was an old, it was a raccoon house, and they're still being taxed, you know, so.
And they're paying.
Well, and I, the people don't even know they're being taxed on it.
The value should be five hundred dollars.
It's a township we just took on and I, we drove out to whatever was being taxed so we could see what we were taxing or what they were taxing. And some of the stuff should be taken off, too. This isn't gonna be just put everything new on. It's gonna be scraping things out.
I think that's kinda the whole process behind the equalization.
Exactly.
Well, yeah, and I think that's what tax equalization is.
Speaking of, what is the township equalization meeting next Monday, correct?
By law, yeah, on Monday. Unless they do more than one township, then they can set them immediately.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, should we direct Steve to start working on identifying starches?
You've got all that information, right, Steve?
You can even compile the list.
Google Earth will tell you all that, right?
Yeah, just, at least, so we can see.
No, Google Earth will, but GIS though.
Or, 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 if you call me partial viewer.
Or partial viewer.
Compile, I guess that's what I think we would need to incorporate, is just to see how much we're looking at.
Yeah, give us an idea of what we're looking at.
How we're looking at.
I mean, I guess what I would suggest is putting a red dot on everyone that isn't being taxed. You know, is that what you're thinking? I mean, we don't have to come up with a-
If they're already being taxed, what do we have to do anything with them for?
They already have dots on it. Steve already did that for me. The ones that are being taxed have a red dot. If we put a blue dot on the ones that aren't being taxed, we could see how many are identified.
What we're, what we're talking about for our workload, yeah.
And I think if, once that's done, won't the GIS develop a list, an address mailing list? If you put a dot on each one? So that would be a start to identify and create a list.
The only thing I would say, in addition to that, the list, like you said, there's gonna be some stuff that's probably being taxed that maybe should be taken off the taxes, or maybe there are properties that are being taxed that they do qualify for the exemption, so they need to receive the letter as well. Anybody that lives outside of city limits should receive the letter because they're technically could qualify for a formal exemption. Correct?
That's true.
I mean, because if we're gonna treat it fair and equitable, everybody that lives outside of city limits has to, or, and or, an incorporated city outside of Devil's Lake needs to receive that letter. We have to give everyone, everyone has to get one.
Exactly.
They might be working it down and making under forty thousand. They shouldn't be getting taxed.
Well, but that doesn't matter. They, they still should be getting taxed that way. Because you have to be farming.
They got ten acres.
Yeah, but you still have to be farming. You have to, fifty percent of your income at least has to be part of the income.
That's not that easy.
That's right, Joe.
Now, there's, that's the thing, there's just so many layers to this.
Exactly. But, but I think that that's a very good point. We, we've gotta make this equitable, so it, yeah. You know, maybe, maybe we'll go in the hole. You know, maybe, maybe we'll go in the hole on this. I don't know.
I don't think we need to go as far as everybody that lives outside the city because, like, people who live on definitely don't qualify. If you have less than ten acres.
I know what you're saying.
I would say maybe query out the less than ten acres, because if you got less than that, they don't qualify.
But I think that's, that's where.
That's right.
We can take everybody with less than ten acres on.
Anybody who's less than ten acres, you're right, does not qualify.
I think that's where you guys as a staff can, among, determine what's proper and what's not proper. I mean, you guys.
We can work on it.
Yeah.
If I know that's the direction we're going, at least I can tell the township staff.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Do we need a motion to have the tax director?
I think we'll have lots of time then if you're gonna tackle this, right?
I have lots of time?
Sounds like I'm gonna. Steve, are you all right?
Do you have all kinds of time?
The time is this gonna take?
I mean, it doesn't have to be done overnight either.
We don't have to have a list first until week.
No, like I said, we.
I think I can. I don't think it's that hard. It would be that hard to develop.
No. That's all I'm saying, is we've got time on our hands to make sure we do it right now if we're going to do it, or determine if we're going to do it.
We're not gonna do it wrong.
No, that's what I'm saying. We've got time on our side now so we can try to attempt to see what we're gonna do.
Let's see, is it done? Do you want, have to show you guys what you developed or just give it to Jerry?
Well, I think we should put it up on there.
I'd love to see.
As we go through this, we're gonna find out things we should do and I can talk to other counties too and the ones that have made the mistakes.
Yeah.
We should talk to Nelson County.
Yeah, talk to Nelson.
Jack, you know.
Yeah, it's just a matter of if we develop the policy correctly, because if we're gonna do it, it's gonna be like you said, once you stop, jump in the stream, we're gonna stay on that stream. So we gotta make sure we do it right if we're gonna do it.
Right. We're not gonna start and then quit.
We should do some preliminary work here first, talk to Nelson County.
Yeah.
See what Steve thinks when he's done reviewing it. You, you tell us what you think when you're done.
Yeah, what it's gonna take to tackle, you know, is this gonna be feasible or?
I would not favor hiring more help.
Yeah, I don't think it's, should be that hard to come up with a list.
Okay.
At least to send things out.
Maybe we should, maybe we should have another article in the paper. Tell people what the rules are again and if they feel they don't qualify, get ahold of the assessor or the tax director.
Anything else? Dave, moving to report on portfolios. Myrna?
Come down here.
Okay. Bill?
Ted?
Portfolios?
I haven't seen anything since last time I was in.
Captain Jane?
Adam? As far as I know, nothing has changed a whole lot. I saw we approved a bill for document preservation, so they must have gotten that project. And I haven't been able to talk with them in the last week, too. I went to that North Dakota Association of Counties meeting, I was pretty interested. Learned quite a bit about all the rules of what everybody does. It's a lightning. It was good to talk with other officials to see kind of how they do things and stuff like that. We're in that, or annual meeting for them. The county housing authority will be next month. We were supposed to have it last month, but we couldn't do it for a while.
Was it, county, 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 you were out there?
It was good. Yeah, it's, it's good to hear the different interplay on the issues between the different subdivisions because everybody's got a little bit different view on their concerns and how to handle it. It's good meeting them.
Mark?
It's been in the newspaper, you know, we lost our museum director. We thought we had a new one here, but she declined. Have an interview this weekend with another potential applicant. We have a gala coming up, a museum for fundraising. We're still moving forward, you know, even without the director, we, you know, we have a great board now and we're moving forward. Law enforcement center, we got our escapee. Everything else seems to be slowly, you know, it's, it's gonna take some time, but everything else is slowly moving along out there. We're moving in the right direction. You know, our turnover has come down to about zero, you know, even all that adding. It's, it's looking up. Everything's looking up, so that's basically about all I have.
What's the date of the gala?
Seventeenth of April. I have tickets available.
Fundraising.
Fundraising, yeah.
Still working on juvenile detention or?
That's kind of still on the burner. It's, it's on the wayback burner. We're just trying to coast it, get things moving along. You know, we have a new administrator. We're gonna let him settle in and grab the reins and, you know, it's definitely not off. We're definitely moving in that direction, but it takes time, so.
What are the counts of it?
That I don't know.
What was it?
Town counts.
Head count?
Yeah.
I need to run around between eighty and ninety. They were down a little bit.
Yeah, they were down last month, but that's what I would have said.
Judges dumped thirteen out one morning, Monday morning, so. Kinda hard to catch up to that.
That all depends on the, when the court meets, I suppose, you know, the people.
Well, it's like what you said, too, that at our last meeting, you know, he said they had a house cleaning day and all of a sudden, you know, lose fifteen people. That's, that's a big hit.
Yeah, it is.
They're at ninety-five, you know, eighty or a little hot. But they've got the meal count right now, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's been quite a savings right there.
They're overpaying for meals.
It was a blanket, blanket deal.
So social service has been going good. Anything else, Mark?
Nope, that's all I have.
Mark covered everything at the jail, I guess. Social service has been going good. Looking at issues with the legislators and trying to work with them and.
Public services.
It's kind of in flux right now.
In flux there.
I don't think they're gonna walk away from property relief, so. And that's a big idea for property relief right there, that bill, so.
They're gonna wait until the end of the session.
Oh, I've, the money will.
We're not far from now.
Boy, they've only got probably twelve, fourteen days left.
So that's kind of scary that they're gonna freeze the, the mill levy at what it is for the two thousand and fifteen year, when ours went back up again because of the.
Well, that's kind of nice for us because it's way up there.
They're gonna freeze it. There's gonna be a freeze on the mill levy so you can't go above that, is what you're saying.
For anything but wages.
We want that frozen at twenty.
Well, it is frozen at twenty.
They're talking about going down to eighteen.
Yeah.
Where's our mill levy right now?
We're at thirty-two point four three, but they're saying that the counties would have to just, the state would pick up over the twenty mils, but now it's saying they're talking about eighteen.
They're talking about eighteen, that's what we.
But they don't want your budget to go up from what it is at fifteen except for wages and benefits.
Right.
Whatever the state employees get is what.
I thought I read it that it was gonna freeze it at where it was for the two thousand and fifteen year, which if we're at thirty-two, they're gonna freeze it at thirty.
No. But you can't go more than the twenty, where the state will pick it up with the grant. So it would bring us back down by twelve point four three mils, which would be nice.
Get to the twenty, yeah. But that's, that's what they said at the Association of Counties meeting, too, if they were talking about eighteen.
Yeah, eighteen.
I believe that's.
Which is bringing us down fourteen mil, right. But then if they go eighteen, say the wages went up three percent and that equals to one mil, it would be nineteen mils we can levy. Or for at twenty, it could be twenty-one and a half. There's a scenario in there.
They also froze that at three percent, didn't they?
Well, they're talking, not yet, not quite yet, not until.
They also froze wages at three percent per biennium, didn't they?
Um, yeah, they froze it quite, it hasn't settled before.
That's what the top, yeah, that's.
That's the top is three percent, but it hasn't passed yet.
And with huge appropriations, that's gonna be some lessons.
The way they're setting social service up is very similar to what they set the county districts up. After the lawsuit, they started lowering the mill levy and adding property relief there. And substantially increasing the state share of education. At one time, the state share of education was forty-four percent. It's in the constitution, it's supposed to be seventy.
Yeah, what, seventy?
Eighty-five to ninety, but.
Yeah, it's quite a bit now.
And that's the same formula here, just in a smaller scale, you know, and that's how they're addressing.
But they did, but they made the, they didn't make the stipulation on school funding that you couldn't increase your budget.
Oh, yeah, you got, you got a limit on the mills. You can only go so high.
But you couldn't, you couldn't increase your budget by anything, but did they make that stipulation in school, in the school funding?
No, they didn't do that.
They didn't, and that's why they're doing it, and that's why they wanna do it now, I think.
I don't think they'll end up doing that. But the school budget has to go up with the aid from education.
Right.
First student, pupil.
That's kind of a complicated form.
Yeah, it is.
Per camp.
The only one in the state that knows that, and he's, he's living that little guy in Department of Education.
You'll like figuring out.
He knows what, yeah.
Valuation of a farm.
Every school, they're in the state, yeah.
Complicated thing, too.
So, but that's what they're doing to social services, copying that school district.
Well, I guess not, because that would be a big cost.
Pretty sure that will.
Did anybody here today, I heard tourism bill passed.
I hadn't heard of it. I guess I hadn't, I hadn't looked for a few days.
They did throw it back in the fundee.
Last week's.
They did throw it back in the fundee. I have a hard time with that.
Yeah.
That's gonna.
All quickly, let's rule a bunch of stuff.
Now, what does, I hope they don't pass that one.
Cats. All it does is shift cats', they're right back to the farmers.
Well, I visited, I ran down the Association of Counties thing. I visited with a few different legislators on that, made a point to break that up. But that's not a, not something we look kindly, let's put it that way.
I don't think it will.
And Representative Costa essentially made it sound like a lot of that kind of stuff. Now that it's over on the house side, it's gonna get put up with the wash, basically, because it's, that's what he thought was going to happen. But he didn't make any guarantees of.
I think that's right.
Well, but it passed out of the senate.
It got out of the senate, yes, but it was on the house side. He didn't think it was gonna, it was gonna make it through that.
Did you talk to Representative Johnson on why he was?
Vote.
Yeah.
Representative Johnson wasn't at the social thing, so I didn't have a chance to visit with him. I haven't visited with him for a while, but Senator Elke also voted for it.
Yeah, he voted for it.
He voted aye on it when it came through, so, and I haven't had a chance to ask him if he voted either, so.
Dave, that's all I got. Anything else, Dave? All right, Dave.